For the meeting of the Washington County Council Board, which is based on identification and remain standing for official allegiance. Let's go to the end. I'd like to thank at this day the blessings of life, the community that we live in, for these that served with us today. We ask that all the things that we do tonight, we will be pleasing to you. We ask that the decisions we make, the deliberations we have, we will be kindly affectionate one toward the other, and at the end of the day, we will be done those things in the best interest of our community, each of our lives and that of our deeds. We will thank you for it in your own name. Amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no end, just as long.
Okay. If you had the opportunity to look at your consent agenda, if there are no additions, deletions, or corrections to make, would you have planned a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I made a motion to accept it.
Okay, you didn't have the financial assistance?
I just whipped her.
You looked at it?
Yes, she handed me hers.
Okay, now with that, we have a motion to accept the consent agenda, is there a second? We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion?
I said.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? I might have a second. Is that right, Margaret?
Yes.
Washington County?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Sheriff, yes. Okay, I think our advertising that we have to, it's the first thing about, at the final call, or somebody always can, so if that occurs, if you will. Do you think we can do it?
We're only opening on the grant administration, we've only got one on the engineering, and we're having to re-advertise, so I'll do that tomorrow. Actually, I think I've forgotten the original.
This is the grant administration for which we're in, this is.
This is Oide and Cora paving.
For the record, and for the audience, we have two proposals submitted for the CDBG grant administration for the Oide and Cora Road paving projects. One is submitted by Fred Fox Enterprises Incorporated, and the other is Gouras, or do we know? G-O-U-R-A-S, and I'm not sure how we pronounce that, Gouras maybe. Yes, this is second one. I think the protocol is that we have to rank these by a certain number of standards, and come up with the one that we think will be the best for us.
So in your book, behind the tab under RFP, grant administration, is the ranking sheet that you can take with you, and it'll tell you how many points are for each area, and then you can bring that back when we get ready to award the bid. So it's not when you leave, you'll take that out of your, the grant administration out of your phone, or you can take that and do your own. So we're going to do Fred Fox, it's going to be number one for the ranking sheets.
That'll be five. Yep, that's the name of the call.
Yep, so on your ranking sheet, up in the right-hand corner, it says, it'll say number one. See that? So this will be the sheet for Fred Fox. And there's another one that says two, that will be the one for the other one, as you taminate.
Okay, is there any questions on what we're doing with these, or any questions on what we've done in this, in the give over? We take these packages that we've just been handed, and these sheets, and we will take those five ranking criteria, and we'll rank, no. Okay. We don't rank on the same page, I said we don't do the whole five, I'm sorry, but we don't rank them like this, we rank them like this, and then, and then we'll do a two-call on the second, and we'll do that. And we need these back.
Well, we have to set a date. Margaret said that typically y'all would go maybe early next week, in the afternoon if you want to, so that the meeting will be just to award this bid.
Can we recess till then, and not have to do any kind of advertising?
That's what she's suggesting.
We'll recess till sometime first of next week, and then just come back and do these. Okay, I'll leave it Monday morning for vacation, I will rank mine before I go out of town and get it to you, and you'll conduct the meeting, Ms. Judy.
Do we settle meeting time?
We have.
I'm getting ahead of the odds.
No, 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 you may be anxious to make a motion, or make a suggestion, but we can do it.
You know, I don't, I mean, I don't work, so you don't have to be the worst.
Surely all eyes are on you.
Anytime after 3:30.
We talk about those people who work all the hours. Anybody got a suggestion, Monday to you, Steve?
Monday at four o'clock.
Monday at four? Ms. Judy, is that?
Good to meet.
Good. Do you need that in the motion, since we're going to recess after a while? Does that need a motion? Maybe by much part, we will recess until Monday at four o'clock. Is there a second to that motion?
Yes, sir.
Well, we've got a motion and a second. Okay, any discussion on the motion? Hey, but Ms. Carter, yes, Ms. Carter?
Yes.
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 Sheriff, yes. And we only got one for the engineer.
Right.
I know they have to be very careful, and we wanted to be spending, took a minute on it, yeah, but if, if it's out there, everybody has people opportunity to get to it, has people opportunity to submit a bid, I wouldn't mind, I see it's been lost, owes, or out of the rent to advertise again, I don't know, I would can't just take the bid to go. I want to probably think if I didn't bid the first time, I'll bid the next time. Would you agree we've got to do that, don't we? Because that's what the process is.
Yes, sir. They're playing by the rules.
They're playing by the rules, okay.
Such as they are.
Yeah. Do you need a motion to re-advertise, or you just want to do that because they told you to?
I think I should have to do that.
Yeah, I think we have to do that. The gentle audience, Mr. Troy Landry.
He was here, but had to leave. He said, you've got in your packet, the bill adjustment that he has, he had a very large leak, and the minimum that he owes is $447.87. He was coming to the council to see if they would forgive the entire $447, but he did say that he would be willing to pay just a flat $100 a month, take his monthly water bill, add some to it to total $100 a month until he could get it paid off, that was the pleasure of the council, if you would not forgive the whole debt.
How long do you have to leave to have a bill that, that works?
It's behind bill adjustments.
What was, what were you going to give five of the lead? Well, he'd be willing, you said, to pay a hundred dollars at one?
Well, he wants to take his rep, his normal water bill, and add enough to it to create a hundred dollars.
Is this his normal bills over here?
Yes.
Already, seventy-five dollars, a hundred and forty dollars, a hundred and forty-eight dollars, a hundred and forty-two seventy-five. So it's not going to be adding very much, she's going to be, going to be like caddying the ground rock for a bit at a time.
His bill went up from seventy-six in February to five-hundred-and-twenty-four in March.
Yeah, that was the leak.
That's the month of the leak.
Right.
I don't know that anybody could go, we'd be in an odd time leak, you know, it don't make too good a sense to me, but ain't what I'm saying, don't make sense of that guy.
When the family leak, where was it?
Do you know, Marcia?
I believe it was out in his barn or shed area, so it wasn't, and I don't know how long it was going, it depends on how much was coming out at the time that it got that high, but apparently it was coming out pretty fast when we found it, and he fixed it the day he found it, he said.
He fixed it?
Yes, he fixed it, and we just happened to be out checking meters when we saw it, and I had called him and told him about it, he had already, he had already started working on it and fixed it before I even called him.
Well, in June of last year, it used twenty-three thousand gallons.
That was another leak, probably.
That's what I'm thinking, we, we didn't circulate with him, in October, it was fifteen thousand gallons. And from February to March, it went up from like sixteen-hundred to still to three-thousand.
He has had a few leaks over the last year, and this has been the biggest on that.
Could he pay fifty dollars a month, plus his average review?
Seventy.
That way fifty dollars, he don't owe her. I'd say he'd pay much.
Some of the others that we've done in the past, and I don't know when we're going to get away from doing it, maybe, maybe our, our, you know, sympathy, we may never get away from doing it, but it seemed, like we said, it was the, it was the bill plus something, it was not included. I might consider his bill to be plus a hundred dollars.
That's what you're saying, right?
Yes.
Or fifty?
That's what she was saying.
I said plus fifty.
Plus.
Right, be a plus fifty.
Plus fifty, not just a random.
Fifty or more.
Yeah, because if he's, if he's a seventy-five, seventy-six dollar, now that's only twenty-five dollars if you're putting on that, so you're saying.
Back to the hundred and twenty-five, make fifty more.
Anybody else got an idea, or a suggestion, or do we even entertain any kind of negotiation here?
Didn't we discuss that here not too long ago? In time, somebody has a hard word there, we discussed it.
We did. Over the, over the course of several months or several years, we discussed it several
Just for reference, the last person that had a significant leak like this, I think you guys took fifty percent off of it, and then let them pay it off in three months or four months, I believe, just for.
But I was thinking they didn't live here somewhere, didn't they, they were?
He didn't live on the property, but it was his, it was his property, he just didn't live there.
I'm not sure if he's here, but I'm going, how can you live with a piece of property that leaks seventy-three thousand gallons of water, and not seal away its swab? I hate the leak, you know. Ms. Rhyfer, do you have any feelings on this?
I kind of agree with Ms. Judy, I think, pay over whatever, you know, not do it like he's talking about, like if his bill's seventy-five, and just equal that out to a hundred, I don't think he won't ever get it paid off.
Ms. Carter, anything, do you have anything different?
No.
I agree with you. Can we make that a motion then?
Make that a motion.
Okay, we've got a motion that.
Then he paid his road repair bill plus fifty.
He paid his road repair, that's definitely going to take him ten months to pay, pay that off, he'll, he'll pay it off this year, Steve.
At least pay a minimum of fifty, I mean, pay more than.
Fifty plus.
Yeah, minimum of fifty, if he can pay more than, if he gets a windfall, gets a big income tax rebate or something, he can pay it off if he can.
Get in the lottery, he may get in the lottery.
But the bill was minimum of fifty, and that, and can we add to that, that if he doesn't do that, we're not going to accept, we're not going to accept payments that is ten, fifteen, or twenty dollars of some kind of, I'll give you this month now, something?
No, a minimum of fifty.
It's got to be this.
A minimum of fifty.
Okay, you need to get a second.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hey, but Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Sheriff, yes.
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
When I moved down, I started that, and we didn't get that sheet now. Okay, everything else can be all along here. You gave us a new agenda.
Don't you have one?
I did, I hadn't did my hand when we started to do this.
Yeah, I believe you've got it.
It is, it is. Thank you, sir.
I stole it.
No, no, thank you, sir. Look at that, it may be of the loss of the fan, some of the fans, if they don't, if they're un-agendaled, audience, Mr. Gregory Cole.
Good afternoon. I'm Greg Cole. For the past three years, I've been the fire chief down at Greenhead. Couple of firefighters in our community are coming up with an idea to have a firefighter competition for a lot of various reasons, and we are searching for a place to have this annual competition. And I come here to seek your approval, and nothing else, to continue coordinating until we can hopefully get an approval to use the Possum Palace as the location to have an annual firefighter event. The big thing, probably in your mind, is we would like to use your water, because it is firefighting-related, possibly as much as seven-thousand-five-hundred gallons per each year, but an annual event, and we would like to do it on the Saturday prior to each September eleventh, so tied in one month after the Possum Festival, and come back to the Possum Palace and have a firefighter-centric. The events would be centered around firefighting skills, such as rolling hose, knocking over a target with, you know, a nozzle, first aid, CPR, extrication on vehicles, and we want to eventually open it to the public, bring in vendors, you know, food trailers, t-shirts, hats, whatever, make it family-friendly, have events where families and kids can get their hands on fire hoses and squirt water in a safe environment. Obviously, we want to bring in EMS and Sheriff's Department for obvious reasons, but even go a step further, and hopefully make it where we have a firefighter versus EMS versus Washington County Sheriff's event, okay? Particularly, one event, and I grew up, forty years ago, you know, back when I was twenty in Arkansas, we were having an annual event, and so this, it was, it was a good time for me as a twenty-year-old, young volunteer firefighter. And the main event was what we called Water Polo, and it's similar to tug-of-war, but instead of using a rope, we suspend a bucket from a cable, and we have two teams head-to-head with fire hoses squirting this bucket, so we're trying to knock, each team's trying to knock the bucket using their fire hose back behind their opposing team, so they're squirting water at each other. And it's such, that was such the main, a main attraction back in Arkansas, back in the eighties and nineties, and I know if we could talk the Sheriff's Department, or even EMS into doing it, if we can get them to put on some gear, that would be a crowd-pleaser. But the main thing is, we're trying to do it on a budget, i.e., for free, because, you know, just like everybody else, the volunteer fire department, the fire community, our budget is limited. But the main thing is to get your approval to continue planning and coordinating with the possibility of using the Possum Palace on September the seventh, which is a Saturday this year, pretty much being an all-day event. So we bring in, hopefully, all of the fire departments from Washington County, put together teams of three, or four, or five, whatever, you know, our departments are small, so our events probably can't be as many members on an event like it was back in Arkansas, where they were putting five and six people, and with plenty of extra, you know, older guys that was my age now, back then, they were there to, you know, do safety, so we'll obviously need support from each of the fire departments that show up to even run the events, be timekeepers, judges on doing each event, but for you, it's, it's permission to use your facilities and your water, up to probably seventy-five-hundred gallons each September, maybe a thousand as we grow, or ten thousand as we grow. So that's my proposal, is just seeking permission to continue planning and coordinating for an annual firefighter competition.
Anybody else have a question or a comment?
Sounds like a good idea to me. I like the.
Yes, ma'am.
We've got the ball field there, y'all can have a softball game or something, or the competition.
That's what I was saying, if you want competition, that's going to be a whole lot easier to have.
Lot of people want to do that.
Yeah, and, and for the fire departments, it's a good training opportunity, because it's something fun to do, and so back at our meetings twice a month, it gives us, you know, a specific task to train on, bragging rights if we win the event, it brings in vendors, brings in the local community, so it will help, you know, with the economy. And obviously, I've already got permission from the fire coordinator to continue pursuing this idea, and I totally agree with him, it's got to be professional, it's got to be successful in the eyes of the community. If we put together an event that's, we embarrass ourselves, and we're not doing anyone any favors, so we, I have over twenty years of military experience, I'm a retired active-duty aviation officer, so I know a lot about planning events like this, even, I did seven years experience in junior ROTC at both Chipley High School, combined with Holmes County, and so I was one of the main planners for the annual drill and ceremony competition that, you know, the high school ROTCs do, so I totally understand how we have to be, be very meticulous on how we plan it, it's got to be professional. We're looking to even invite local, surrounding counties, firefighters from Bay County, Walton, Holmes, Jackson, and so if, if we do it properly and professionally, it'd be good for everyone, good for families, good for morale of the firefighters, good community relations.
Skills competition? You're talking about skills competition?
Yes, sir.
Is the DPCF still active?
Sir?
Is the DPCF still active?
She's Fire Association.
Sir?
Fire Association, yes, sir.
And you have their endorsement?
I have the fire coordinator's endorsement, yes, sir. Not the, the Chief's Association, maybe talk to them. The Chief's Association, I'm sorry, I didn't wear my hearing aids. We have. Chief's Association. The Fire Association for Washington County, I have not presented it to the fire chiefs in the county yet, but I already have a, a member on Sunny Hills who's already joined my efforts to plan it, the fire coordinator's son has joined, even Adam Smith, you know, he's a, he's.
You think the association will endorse it?
I'd say. Yes, sir, one hundred percent, as long as, you know, we do it properly, professionally.
They used to have a, they used to have a budget as well, do you know how, what that budget looks like now?
It's not really.
Other books?
Yeah.
So you will need sponsors?
Yes, sir, and, and primarily, the sponsors for the skills would be, you know, we'd ask Walsaw Fire Department to provide one apparatus and a judge, and Walsaw provided an apparatus and a judge, so as, as departments come on board and say, yes, count us in, we're going to say, you know, we need to count on you for this type of truck, this type of hoses, this type of equipment, this many people, not only to be a team, but we also need one or two people to be judges and scorekeepers and that kind of thing. And another thing that he mentioned, it's a great, great idea, being, using Walsaw, is the fact that all of the departments will be centrally located, that way if there is a call, we can still service the county while we do this, without having to be, say, if we did this over Greenhead, it would be a drive. For Orange Hill and Five Points, it's, it's too far away for them, so. Yeah, we don't, we don't want to get departments too far away for any, for any reason.
I'm thinking that Jackson County used to do that, does anybody remember, or, or in Creighton, I'm thinking that Jackson County used to do this, maybe over a little airport or something like that, maybe.
Pensacola does on the beach, they have, they have a beach on. They just, Pensacola just had it this past weekend, and it's a nationwide attraction. My, one of my departments from Arkansas, back in the eighties and nineties, I just read where they sent a team down and participated, so. That's way tougher than I promised you, we're not doing that, I assure you. This is basic firefighter skills, first, basic first-aid skills.
How would, how would we, how would we handle those water overland?
Well, I guess one day goes on down there for three days.
How much we, how much was ten thousand gallons?
How much, well, Marcia's not here, how much is gallon, gallon of water?
I don't, I have no idea.
Great.
I think as long as we just.
The suggestion he was making is, we can dig our tankers, and we can pull out of the creeks, or the, or the, and there are no tanks, and we don't have to.
I think if there was a question on, I think if there was a question on price, we could, we could work that.
You know, you, you, you all missed the point, it wasn't a matter of truck, it wasn't a matter of price, but when we're audited every year, our wells, every, how many gallons goes through, our bills has to meet that budget, we have to have somewhere, we have to put a meter out here, if you remember, the little, the order rises up for missing water.
And so perhaps.
It's like missing money.
Perhaps we could use a meter just for that event, on that hydrant, so we know exactly how much water we take from your system.
Or we can, if you're talking about September, we've got time to call, and we can call them and say, if our minutes, if our minutes say that we endorse this, will that be, will that be an audit document and all that, it's not, it's not something that's major, it's just.
Yes, sir.
Need to cover the bases.
Yes, sir.
Okay, sounds like, sounds like a good idea, sounds like something the Firefighters Association, and everybody's moving forward with their training and skills and cooperation as much as anything, too. So you're looking for a motion, you're looking for those to act now on your request to allow you to use the Saturday before, September the eleventh annually.
Yes, sir.
For this, for this.
Starting this year.
If it's successful, and you want to continue, and that we, and that we cover the order where we have to for a hook of ten thousand gallons of water.
Yes, sir.
You said seventy-five now, we just wasn't starting ten.
Might as well just, yeah, just go for the max, just in case. Hopefully we come in once. And we're hoping that, you know, the first year is successful, so we can do next year, and. year and just eventually grow it, especially with the highway expansion coming through and...
Okay, most of the council's pleasure.
I think it's a good idea.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
We got a motion that we, that we, whatever you said, we need to get...
I gotta repeat.
Is there a second?
I second.
We have a motion, saying any discussion on the motion? Sheriff Oates, Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan Burden?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Okay. Good to meet you, Ms. Cohen, thank you for coming.
Thank you. Now, should I come here on a monthly basis to provide updates to you on our planning and coordination and exactly where we're at and how many teams? Would you like updates?
Actually, this is, this is like...
If you got anything to update, I mean, whether you, if you don't come back next month, that's brutal, so that you're out, beating the bushes and getting organized. If you have something to tell us, come tell us, if you don't, I don't, I don't...
Come back in August. How about, how about we come back with a presentation once we...
Okay. How many teams have we signed up, what the events are going to be?
I was thinking August. I was thinking August.
Closer to the, yeah, come back with a...
Let us know this, let us know that it's a competition.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, or that you will withdraw.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Can we keep that date open? That's it, that's it.
Yeah, we can keep that on the cover?
We're going to book that as a recurring, the first Saturday of September, well, not necessarily the first Saturday, but...
Depending on where they live.
The Saturday before September eleventh.
Right, yeah. Some, some years it will be the second Saturday. But it'll be here.
We'll figure it out.
Okay, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Smith?
Well, I, I guess, my part is actually the first line on the clerk's line as well. I sent out my official resignation as chief, as of tonight after this meeting. Reason being is I'm, I'm severely busy. I have my job, which is full-time, that involves day and night work, plus we now own a company that is growing and opportunities arise that would affect my position as chief and/or affect my company. And I don't think it's fair to my company, which I'm trying to grow, when literally all I need to do is not hold a title, you know? I'm not going to do anything less for you than I've already done, I promise you that. I'll still be the liaison between the fire department and the, the city or the town, and I'll still bring the word as we, as necessary of whatever we're, we're needing or whatever we're doing. I've been on that department for better than ten years, twelve years, thirteen, some men, or like that, it's a part of me, it's my life. And I imagine whenever I'm old and retired, I'll still be walking those floors, cleaning them, because I have a, I have an ownership in that fire department. I helped build it. And I was there when the contractors, I checked it every day, I watched it grow, I've been watching it build, we, we painted the floors, we've done everything, we painted the walls. So it's going to stay like that. I have ownership in that fire department, I'll continue to make sure that it stays. Walsall's prettiest object, that's my goal, because I love that department, that's where, that's, that's my family, that's my friends. And so you're going to still keep getting the same you're getting from me. What you're not going to get is the position, the title. And I will be happy to relinquish, relinquish that title to my good friend, Mr. Owens. I know that the council doesn't have to vote for him, but I ask you to. He'll carry on the same as we've been doing, nothing's going to change, you'll notice not much different at all, except he's going to have, he's going to take the leadership and I'm going to stand behind him. So with that, I'll, I'll get to do as chief of the fire department.
Anybody have a question for Mr. Smith? His presentation, we all have a copy of this letter. I do.
You do.
Ms. Carter, do you agree that the title is what, is what conflict is?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so if he stays on the fire department, that means there's conflict. We've got to protect both, both sides here, and that's what we all...
Sure.
Because the, Ms. Carter says he's not...
No, I appreciate that, that's what I need to know.
Otherwise, just volunteer basically.
Just a volunteer.
Doesn't diminish what you're doing for, for conflict purposes.
I appreciate that.
Yes, sir. Our service shows you as an employee, that's the conflict.
That's a, that's a...
We've got two things on the floor, I think, and if you want to say promotions, we do it, one of these that we accept the resignation. And the other one is, we have minutes in our booth that, that supports Mr. Smith's recommendation for Mr. Owens to become the chief. It appears the fire department, which is protocol, that they will send us a name and we will either confirm it or, or send it back. Can we do both of those, the two motions? Is there...
I'm agreeing.
Yes, sir. Mr. Carter agrees, okay? Is there a motion that we accept Mr. Smith's letter from, as, as, his resignation as fire chief?
I'm agreeing.
I'll second it.
Motion, saying any discussion on the motion? Ms. Ryan Burden?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Sheriff Oates?
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, now we are without a fire chief.
We're going to make another motion.
We're going to make another motion, that fire, we need another motion. We have, we have a recommendation from Mr. Smith, but we, on top of that, also in your packages of minutes, these minutes from the fire department meetings, is that Mr. Smith, nominated, nominated Mr. Owens as fire chief of second and due to pass unanimously. And the recommendation of the fire department is that Mr. Owens be appointed as the fire chief. Is there any discussion on that?
Michael, there's two Michael, so which, you're, which one? These couple.
I'm Calwes, as most people know me.
Yeah, I just need your name for the record.
It's Michael Daniel.
Daniel, so you're Michael D., okay.
Michael D.
Okay.
And Michael, I don't, I don't know that it needs to be brought up, but I didn't know that your name had been appeared before.
Yes.
We, we did not, but you continued to serve us very well, and there was purposes and reasons...
No matter, honestly, no matter what you decide, I'm still going to keep doing what I've been doing, it's not going to change anything.
So here we, here we are again, is there a motion, or do we, or would you ask for a second, second nomination from the fire department?
I'm agreeing that we accept Michael D. Owens as fire chief.
Now, we got a motion, is there any discussion on the motion? Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Sheriff Oates?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you, and I will do my best, as I've always done. And if you ever have any problems, I'm always available.
And to the chief, I will say thank you for your last couple of years of service in that role, chief, and thank you, even under, under the previous administration, Mr. Smith was correct, he had so much to do with grants and talking about adding a fire department, writing heard, if you will, on the progress and things like that. Thank you for job well done.
And I'll stick to them.
All right, anything else on the, on that one?
The second thing under my name is that we have had a request from a citizen for an occasional extra garbage can. She told us it was a policy, the council had made a policy, which we can't find written down, that if the residents wanted to occasionally use an extra can without renting it, that the council allowed that. So just for clarification, we wanted to see if that had been a policy that you wanted us to implement, like if she were cleaning up a shed, they were cleaning up a shed for that one day, needed extra garbage. She thought that there was a, in the past, the council had made a policy that we could allow that.
Yeah, we couldn't allow that.
That we, that y'all did allow that. We didn't find that written down anywhere.
I don't know anything about that.
I don't either. But I don't know.
I pay for an extra can every month, so...
And I, I think as everyone should say, that I don't think you've found a policy, I think you're going back for years and years and years, back to George's days, that it was probably a practice, I don't know, an easy thing to, maybe call up, see how much you can give one, but then it had to come back like that, where you cleaned out the shed or whatever you said, for an example. I don't think there's a policy, I think there's probably been a very loose practice that allowed that to happen. Now, we can make a policy or we can just continue the practice, that's, that's up to others, but I don't think you'll find a policy that just said that. Do you have two cans continually, so you pay for them, you don't, you don't just want some volume?
Right.
I've actually bought one more purple, maroon, whatever your color, when they, when they change colors on us, they didn't get picked by, by case, they would feel that they were taking them there, and they didn't get... I confess now. Ready to go to hell. But all the political, everything you're doing.
And I think that's, I think that's kind of what she was wanting to do, was just put a different color can down there and...
How long was she putting them keeping?
Just one day, she just wanted to put it out there one day.
One collection.
That don't happen all the time, does it?
And that, yeah. Another thing that they ought to be, a limit to that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can put that one from...
Not once a month, or not twice a month, or something like that, just in case it needs to have a, have a limit or something. Any, any comments? Yes?
Our waste management driver has, they have a list now of everyone that is paying for a second cart, and he is very strict on that list as of the past year. If you're not on the list, you don't get picked up for a second cart. So that's, that's why, like, if, if somebody needs a second cart, I have to add, I have to send waste management an email, let them know I'm adding them to my list, then they can pick it up. And, I mean, if, if we're going to charge, you know, if we're going to, if I'm going to put them in the system, I would, I would start charging for it. So I don't know how y'all want to do that, but, but waste management gets the email, I added them to the second cart, and it's just, I guess, up to the council if, if we want to charge for that extra cart, but, but he's very strict now about you have to be on the list with a second cart.
I think, is there any ways, more statements? I think we need to have our waste management group come down here and tell us, if we can't put one cart out there once over three months, or two or three people in the course of a year, put one out there, that, there.
If it was designated as city-owned, would, would they, would he pick it up?
From what I understand, he does not pick up a can, and y'all tell me if you've seen any difference, I don't know. He's, he won't pick it up unless it's a waste management can. But like I said, if he does it for you, let me know, I don't know.
And it's, it's been a long time, but I do, there's been some Christmas, we, we used to have carts out here all the time, somebody opened, somebody came up, and it was two days before garbage come, and they called around and told them to come get one and monitor, get it back, that's like that. If anybody ever been charged, I don't know it.
At one time, it was fifteen, twenty out there.
We have one still, they're just in the back. These people were getting where, they were filling six or seven cans up, not garbage in town. So every Monday, all seven of them, they filled to the ground.
Yeah, that would go on, I'm saying people would do that, yeah.
I said, come in here on Saturday with the truck, and take it home, do that.
Yeah. I don't have a problem with somebody occasionally, I mean, we may not be, may be, but just be as close as we can. I don't have a problem with somebody wants to pop, they need an extra can, because they clean that, clean that closer. That, that keeps, we always do the cleaning thing, that keep, we'll be piled up somewhere, piled up in the yard, could be, that's not bad, till the next week. I don't have a problem with this. Have a, I don't have a creative policy, I mean, we just, that's simply getting a lot of overheat and rush, I don't have that.
And I just want you to tell us if you want someone to do it, can they do it several times a year, can they do it one time a year? We'll need to check waste management, see if waste management will even pick it up.
Yeah.
And then, I mean, you know, you...
When does she want this can?
Well, she wanted, she's already got it filled, it's out, it's not on the road, that waste management wouldn't pick it up.
Because it wasn't on the list, or because...
Right, because it wasn't on the list.
Does she have one that is on the list?
Yes.
I think we've got, I think we've got a customer that's already paying for one, and they just needed to set one to supplement a, a cleanup or a, after, after, if you have a funeral, and all this community brings all that through at the end, when you get through, you've got three garbage cans full, it needs to be hauled off.
Couldn't you put a designation on the can itself that says Walsall, and if it just happens to be that somebody's out, each of them, right?
He just has a list of each...
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, though, he knows what we have here, if there's a designation on it...
I think he said if we stench a rumble can itself, council, if it, no matter where it's at, it's town Walsall pick it up.
I mean, you're still paying, you're still paying...
Pick up that can from here, take it to their house for that week, and as soon as you're done, bring it back, and then the next person could use it.
But it's still, it's, you're still paying for the can regardless, so it ain't like they shouldn't, you know?
Let's do this, let's ask the clerk to negotiate with waste management, tell them what the, what the feeling of our court is, and this is, we've got a good relationship with them, always have had, I don't know, this development about them having the list and a second can, so I don't know, I would, if they requested that or anything like that, but I think, I think that's not an unusual request. And, and, I guess, like churches and businesses and all, churches in particular, they got probably a dumpster, they have a home kegger or something, they, they got that covered. But I know when both my parents passed away, we had, we probably had three cans full of food, excess or paper plates and things like that after the funeral, and that was not a problem, and I'm sure that happens many times in the town, so we don't want to be unreasonable, they are a for-profit and they are a business, and they have to look after their business with life tricks in their empty one, they can send a damn thing to the other one.
It's still paid for.
Yeah. Anybody else have a suggestion? Is that all right with, with each view that she does, that is?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Would you, would you please do that?
The next thing on the list is the job description changes, we talked about this, I think, last month, after the meeting, Marcy and I did have a discussion, and she does want to stay and work twenty-eight hours for the town. The job description, basically I'm bringing to the council so that it's under clerk, sometimes it says clerk, it should...
Personnel.
Oh, personnel, something. Basically, because these are things that I've been asking her to do, and I just wanted the job description to reflect some of the duties. And so that's, I'm asking this. Her title did change some time back to deputy and clerk, but the job description had never changed.
And you're wanting us just to accept this?
Except the, the red is what has changed. The black was the original, the red is just what's changed. And basically, most of it is to be able to go into the field, send her out to the field, to put on red tags, or occasionally turn water on and off if we need it. And her job, the job description was basically a secretarial job description. So, now I think she wanted to speak on it.
Is now a good time, or do y'all need to discuss it first?
We're here.
Okay. As far as being out in the field, I have, my husband and I have went out in the field and turned off water, turned on water, put out twenty-four-hour notices. And in that time, when he wasn't with me, I went a few times that I felt comfortable in those areas, and I fell in a hole, a meter box hole, trying to get the lid back on. So... So, um, going forward, I feel like the safest way for me to do it is in the occasion that I need to, and our maintenance department doesn't, isn't able to, um, that I take my husband with me. And he can probably come once a week, if, if he needed to. There's one day during the week that he can do that. But from what I understand, this is an occasional occurrence, so it shouldn't be needed very often.
In the event that wasn't taken, could what he does be the same as what general others does? It would be a volunteer basis and does our liability increase?
So, we just need to designate him as such with y'all's action, so it's condemned?
As a volunteer.
Because if he's acting on this town's behalf, he is an agent of the town at that point, whether it's voluntary or not. So, that's what the council wishes for to happen. Does it increase your liability? To answer your question, no, no grade with any of those volunteer.
That, and that was the question.
Yes, sir.
I, I tell you this, and I don't see anything wrong with it. Uh, I would hope that, I would hope that, uh, with us now having a maintenance person, that the majority of all this is going to be handled, and the occasions for either one of our, uh, I don't use the terrible term, but no life manner, but either one of our office staff would have to go out. Not Marcy, not Lynn. It'd be good if we had this.
My question is, is making, when Marcy's office or Lynn's office, the maintenance man gonna come in here and do their job? What's the difference?
Say that again, Al.
Marcy, y'all want Marcy to go do, to me, maintenance job for the garbage cans, reading the meters, stuff like that. Maintenance man normally does. So, if Marcy's gonna do his job, from Marcy's office, he can come in here and do Marcy's job or Lynn's job.
Well, and it's not doing his job.
It's not, no.
It's if he's tied up, for instance, yesterday, we had a site visit from the DEP. They got us on several things. It, it did not go well with several things. I got till May 10th to get them cleaned up, and it's physical labor things. If, if we need to put out red tags on Monday, I, I need to be able to...
Those are red tags?
It's saying that we're gonna cut your water off in two days. I don't want to pull him off of that, because these are physical, it's, it's scrubbing some corrosion off of pipes and repainting them and fixing the eye wash stations. They were not working. I don't want to have to pull him off of that to go put the red tags out, because we, our policy is to put the red tags out 24 hours later at least, go cut the water off. And I really don't want to have to wait another week until Marcy's husband's off. If we need the red tags out to be able to cut the water off, and, and it won't be all the time, it will be occasionally. Occasionally, if we're in a bind, and I can do it some days, um, I, I don't mind doing it, you know? I don't mind doing it. But it's like, and it's not reading the rea, reading the meters, she does read the meters, but we have, still have those unread meters, that somebody has to go and physically read them. And certain, we taught him how to do it, he certainly does not mind at all, doesn't mind doing that. But it's like occasionally, if I need to, her to go out, but this job description basically says, this is a secretary job, that you're gonna be in the office all the time. That's what this job description says. So, everything in here is, is if needed, as needed, periodically needed. I mean, it's not at all taking over the maintenance position.
And I'm hap, I'm happy to do it with my husband with me.
And I don't see that, I don't see that being a maintenance person's job, and, and as far as I'm concerned, if one of them are out, anything that Garrett has the skills to do, they can come in there and do their job. The job description is to cover getting the work done. It's not a maintenance person's job. Margaret did it for years, weekends, nights, everything else. She come out, she turned off the meters, she tagged them, things. I don't see it as, I don't see it as given, and I'm not saying that I'm going to do it. I think you said y'all want her to do this. I'm not saying we don't want to do it, but you said this is a good job description, and it covers what needs to be done to keep the work going and keep the flow of work going and things like that.
And I don't feel like it should be left up to just Lynn to do the working in the field. I think y'all should split that.
And I'm happy to do it with my husband.
But I mean, we can't, you know, we can't necessarily schedule around your husband's schedule. It's a problem.
That, I, that's the safest way I feel out, going out in the field. I've already fell in a hole. I've been chased by a dog. That's the safest way I feel like I can do it.
So you're saying that's the only way you do it, if you're told to do that?
That's the way I feel safe, yes, ma'am.
That wasn't her question. Her question is, are you refusing to do it without that?
I, I mean, I don't know how to say it other than that.
So, say yes or no?
I want to be able to do it, but I can't be chased by a dog and fall in a hole again. So, no, I don't think I can do it.
Okay, so how can we work around that? See, see, and, and we have to be fair to, to all three of you. For us to say that you're doing Garrett's job is also to say that she's doing Garrett's job, and she has to do it.
If, and I have went out on my, by myself, if I knew there was not a dog there, and if I, and, and like I did, I did go out to, um, where Moody's Farmhouse Restaurant, that was where I fell in the hole. And since then, I've made sure that my husband was with me. Um, so I, I don't know what else to say other than that.
Were you hurt?
It hurt, yeah. I fell on my butt. I mean, I didn't put in an incident report, but...
That was the next question. Do we, do we have an incident report on that?
I have a witness. I can get him to come in here.
And we don't want you hurt, but you could have just as easily stepped off the sidewalk here and twisted an ankle, and your husband would have been here then. I mean, that's...
I think it's a little different, you know, because it's part of my job, supposedly.
Mr. Carter?
Well, you know, you just need more care at Currie's, Marcy, you, you, you just, the way I see it, I mean, I, I don't know, I mean, uh, if it's part of the job description, we all have different jobs. Some of us, we just don't like, I mean, that's normal. That's a normal procedure.
It's really...
I would, you know, I just give it some thought, so if you don't like it...
It's not that I'm concerned about liking it. It, it's for my safety. I don't want to be bit by a dog. I have a high fear of dogs, especially big ones that chase you.
Well, and I came to repair a bathroom for my dog, but I, I was confronted with dogs all the time. I knew I was gonna be, uh, I don't like it either, personally, or I don't like dogs, you know, that bite you. I don't like them kind of dogs. But, you know, I don't know. Somebody else say something, or...
Mr. Carter?
Well, she said her husband was coming in to volunteer to help her, uh, one day a week. Out when we turn the water, out when we turn the people's water off. It's not that often.
It, it, it's an ongoing thing. This is what I've written me about.
It doesn't need to say occasional, then.
I mean, you know, it's, it's not...
Well, and it would be occasional with you.
Yeah, just occasionally with her, I mean, Garrett's having to do it.
It, it would be occasionally with you.
Yes.
So, uh, and, and you're right, how often does it happen? Can we do it? But then the next thing, we come in here and that, and link the water bill thing, and wherever we want to go, why wouldn't they know they turned off? Because sometimes they need to be turned off on Monday and sometime on Thursday.
And those manual readings, every time we, we do the water bills, those manual reads have to be done.
And I'd like to add to that, um, we've changed out almost all the meters that have, have had to be manually read. So there shouldn't be any if, at this point. Um, I'm gonna find out in my next meter reading, uh, for sure, but we have changed out all the ones that were not picking up. And so far, the ones that have been changed before my previous reading, they all picked up, so...
As I read this and, and as the office manager, are there, are there other things in the office that she can pick up that you're doing? That would let you do more of these, uh, in the occasion comes for one of you to have to do it?
On file and anything?
No, she, no, I mean, we've, we've got all that worked out. I think we've, you know, I think we've got that worked out, so...
Mr. Carter, where are we on accommodations?
If, if she's refusing, sorry to talk back to some third person. A duty that I think is, is clearly provided for in here, that maybe grounds to take a different approach. No offense, ma'am, just written my legal opinion. If there's a reasonable workaround that y'all can be happy with, uh, it's, it's really just a practical decision for it. But you can go either way, legally speaking, because the description is occasional, as you pointed out. She's agreeing to do these things occasionally.
And I'll certainly step up more, I mean, than I, I, I'm, I go over the top half since I started here. I don't mind. I just want to get the work done. That's all. Just want to get the work done. That's all I'm trying to do, get the work done.
What about Joe, I want to have with sometime, if he turns up and asks to be done, you know?
You're, you're proud of Joe. He can, he can only work until 10:00 because he has a regular job. He has to...
Oh, I know, I know.
Yeah, he locks on at 10:00 AM.
He's here, you can tell him.
Yeah. But I don't feel like it shouldn't only be me.
Sure.
I mean, it shouldn't only be me. And, you know, I'm...
But between...
That's, that's my thing. I think this is a reasonable job description. If we can make accommodations, that's great. I think we've got a good team. I think that the last couple of years here in the High Water District, Marcy's been here to, those things she did, she didn't wait. But, uh, if, if she was led to believe, and she thinks she was, that she would only come, come here to do meters, or work the building and taking on like that, we don't, we don't need 28 hours of lab, I don't think. I don't come in here and do it, because I, I think that's a lot of time to send out bills and collect, collect. If you could say, you've got, you've got Dropbox, and now do it online, uh, you can say, bills received from eight to 10, three days a week, something like that, it, that's a lot of time just to have a way to not do the one job.
I also clean this whole facility on Thursdays. I also clean this whole facility on Thursdays. I mean, it's not all I do is just take payments. That's not what all I do. Everything, I mean, it, it takes time. I know it may seem like, you know, this doesn't look like a lot, but when you think about all the phone calls that we get, all the people that come through here, construction, I'm the first point of contact. And, you know, I try to take that burden off of Lynn as much as I can, you know? So it's just mostly focused on me. I mean, it, my day is full every day. So, to take my hours away, I, something's probably not gonna get done as well.
And again, the job description change was to identify those areas that may occasionally be needed. Because in Marcy and I's discussion, she did not feel like she was hired for some of these things. She did not feel like she was hired to read meters or to put out red tags.
Manually read, yes.
Yeah, manually read meters.
Because the original job description that I got, I know it can change, I know, I know you've mentioned that. It did say office setting, and that's the impression I got when I took the position. I never considered that I would be digging in a hole, um, you know? I mean, I know that there's things that need to be done, and I, like I said, when my husband is off, I can do my very best in the occasional occurrence that I need to. That's fine, you know? But if y'all can be patient with me and I, so I can work around his schedule the best that I can.
The thing that you're reading from there is probably some kind of overview of the job. I dare say those of us that get working offices, sometimes I was actually on the side of the river or cook, or stop to, or shovel as well. That's a general overview that's on a job description.
Right, right.
So, you generally are working in an office setting.
Right.
So you have to go down to the compounding paddis and check or something, or go try off some meters.
And I do, like I put...
You're still in an office setting, that's who you're based.
I filled up the bathrooms today and put paper towels, liquid and soap, um, toilet paper, filled all those, made sure it was ready to go, you know, for an event this weekend. It's, I mean, I don't do just things in the office. The part that I'm concerned about is digging in a hole and, um, being chased by a dog, which has already happened, both of those. And I feel for my safety. I'm not trying to be dramatic. I may be, but I'm not trying to be, but, um, I just feel like going forward, that's the way that I need to do it.
Was the whole, was the whole part of the meter box situation, or was it something?
Yes, I had, I took the lid off, was digging in there to turn the water on. When I, um, was putting the lid back on, I couldn't physically get it on with my hands, so I decided to stomp it. Well, when I stomped it, it gave way and my foot fell in the hole. So, I mean, I'm obviously clumsy, but I, you know, it happened.
As well as saying I have to try to get it done.
Take your hand, take your hand, boy.
Okay. So, so the read is basically what we, that's the only changes that we're into the job description, yeah?
But I think we need to get it clear from the discussion whether or not this is gonna include her having to turn water on and off and post red tags, but that seems to be the big issue that, that we, and the community service workers, maybe.
Well, you can order dogs for...
Oh, the community service workers?
We usually that post office off time. You can order by the case. I don't have any canned sites.
What was the issue about the community service worker?
Um, I, I just, I put in here, assisting community service workers, because occasionally, we do have to take them to areas that we want them to clean, um, and that, you know, didn't you say you don't feel comfortable doing that?
I said he could ride in the back of the truck.
Well, I can't ask a guy to ride in the bed of a truck.
I mean, these are, these are...
A woman to ride in the back of a truck.
I don't mean this ugly, but these people have been found with drugs and who knows what else. I just, I'm sorry, I'm a lady that trusts...
Not the ones we get, are. They're not, they're not families. They're community service people.
Some of them are families, for drug, for drug related. For drug related. I mean, they're fine, but, like, we have a walk, two women that have to walk. Sure, one of, one of them gets dropped off, the other, no, both of them get dropped off. And if we need them to go to pass a house to clean, somebody has to take them up there.
I would feel more comfortable with them bringing a lady, but a gentleman, I just...
Well, we live in a different world now, I mean, Marcy, I mean, it's good to have convictions like that, maybe, but we live in a world, you know, if you hit where you go to church and you can't pat somebody on the shoulder and somebody is making a sue you or something like that, that, that's going way off limits, uh, you know? We live in a different world, I mean.
Is, is that a strike through? Is that, is that a strike through now or is that already done?
I, I straight, I did the strike through other job-related duties, and I just fit reform other duties as needed. That's just job duty, it can stay.
I feel like I've offered my assistance in any way I can, you know, and I, I try to go the extra mile whenever I, I ask, when I can help and where I can help, and, and if I'm, if, if it happens to be that I don't have anything to do, I'll go clean something. If it happens to be I don't have anything to do, uh, you know, I find something to do. Your, your, your money's being spent well on me, I feel like. I don't just sit there at my desk.
On the, uh, community service thing, uh, uh, it's one thing that we use and we reimburse, I was the first one with vehicles, but, you think that we're, that I'm not, I don't know what to think about it, but anyway, I tend to, I tend to lean the way just a little bit on that one, putting somebody in the car, maybe, and taking them off. Now, they should be vetted, we, we should know that they're here, and most of the ones that do, that I've ever seen was here because they didn't use their hands, they were just dumb, or dumb mistakes. But, uh, I, I tend to lean that up a little bit now. If they, if... If they, if Phil or someone said one time, they're not, they're not here for going to send a school. When they come in and sign in, if Garrett or whoever has to haul them over down to the possum paddock, got down there, I don't care if they, if they have to walk in at the possum.
That's what you say, we've got sidewalks.
I don't, and I don't think to be, to be thinking about it, any one of, any way that I could, but I lean that, I lean a little bit that way, not, not to the point that I would not adopt this, but I, I do understand that.
Well, who's in charge of the workers when they come? I mean, you tell them what to do, or does maintenance man, they work with maintenance man, or what?
If they're, will work outside maintenance, the man typically, they'll work outside with him. Now, if he's not here, or for whatever reason we have him show up, we, we send him out to do a job. Like, we send the women typically to go clean at the possum palace, that kind of stuff. There's just not enough work.
Trash taken down there and go pick them up.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's just, just too far, and it's hot, it was getting hot.
Most of the people that I've came in contact with had a ride and they were, there, there is occasion where, where they don't have a ride to get down there, but.
Well, the last two, they dropped, they dropped off, they didn't have a ride, just two women. And Keith, he hadn't had a ride.
Yeah.
But I mean, that's not enough to do with this little building. Keith will be here eight hours a day, we have to send him out.
How long do they push, come, how long say?
Eight hours, have them all, have them all.
I mean, they do like, have to do what, 100 hours, 200 hours?
15, 16, hundreds, something like that. I feel like we have to take them to the job, we want them to do the work.
We've got a fire station. Where the next, next two or three, you've got these 60 hours for cleaning up, needs to be done out here.
Outside the building.
Okay, for the sake, for the sake of time, what we need to do, I think the job description fits what, and, and, and after Marcia, and after Lynn, and after the five of us, this will be something that the next person comes on and is noted. That this is what we expect of them. I think the job description is good. Now then, if there's accommodations we can make, so that we say for the most part, or maybe you're saying 90% of the time, yours can do this anyway. But outside of that, if it has to be done, I'd bring Miss Carter, get some, get some mace, that much longer.
It's not mace, it's regular dog spray.
Dog spray. Some of that, yeah, and, uh.
That'll take care of the dog problem, and I think.
I'm not going to get in trouble for spraying somebody's dog.
No.
No, you're not.
Mr. Carter.
You're, you're working, you're working under the instructions of the, of the council. You're, you're not taking on any personal.
If there's, if there's any trouble, it would flow to the city, not to you personally.
I'm not involved here.
Well, I don't want to mess the city up either.
Don't look.
I don't want to mess the city up either if I spray somebody's dog.
You're two chances, you need to, you need to vocalize.
Well, I've had fam, many family members, my husband, husband's family members, that have been almost mauled by dogs, so that, I have a very healthy fear of big dogs.
We'll get you some dog spray, and that works.
Okay.
And it worked quite on me, yeah. I tried it at the post office, lost it.
With as many meters being changed as, or how much, how much manual reading do you think that will reduce the danger?
I don't know.
There shouldn't be any manual reading.
It should take care of, if the new, if it, if it was a meter problem, I think we've moved out, turned out five or six. That should take care of some. Now, the town ones are going to always have to be manually read. And that's probably six or eight, you think?
Uh, three or four.
That's here, Possum Palace, Rogers Square.
The wells.
Okay.
We don't know yet if a meter was the problem.
There shouldn't be any more danger of a dog in those places than there are anywhere else on the streets. I mean, if a dog at Possum Palace may belong to somebody, but you can't find them. We, we stripped down registration thing. So that same dog might bite you over here in the fire department or anywhere else, so we can't, we can't take away all the what-else. That just, that's just life, and they, they, there's what-else out there. Some of them are extreme, but I think that with, with the dog spray.
And Garrett, or not to say her husband.
Yeah.
Garrett, depending if he can come with her to read the meters, because she don't want to come by herself, that's her son. He's a big boy now.
Sure, sure, that'd be.
And that way we don't have to just depend on wheels day off.
Yeah, because.
She can kind of handle that.
Depend on that.
Well, the only thing is, he's at school during the day.
What times you get out of school?
Three.
Well, you got from three to four.
Yeah, I get off at three, then.
Some of these, some of these things can be going after hours and all like that. I think we want to accommodate your fear, I think we want to accommodate your maintaining hours. But then, it's two ways, you're going to have to, you will have to give back.
Is it acceptable that my husband come with me then?
Yes.
Yeah, if he's off, it wouldn't, I don't think it would be acceptable if that needed to be turned off on Monday or Tuesday, but he's not going to be here until next week, I don't think that would be acceptable.
The week, the week of.
I just don't want to wait on her husband to be off to try to assign tasks, I mean, that's just not fair.
But that may be the only way we can do it.
I agree, if we, if we aren't careful, we're going to set some precedences, so that down the road, whether it's somebody else in a meter, or whether it's an outside employee, they got to wait for their wife to off to, you know.
I don't think that's a good idea myself. Because like Lynn said, if it needs to be done today, and then he's not off till later on in the week, you know, I don't think you can depend on that.
Well, y'all can do it on a case-by-case basis, you're not setting any binding precedent. Now, maybe a precedent in the terms of fairness in that regard, but there's no legal precedent created if you do want to make an accommodation.
I think we've got water needs to be turned off for home, home more than hall people, and I think we've got, you told me a few weeks ago about one, that the water had, that was continually late. Come time to get it turned off, it got turned off, and they wasn't there to come in, but they get the vag for only check up. But then when they come up and pay the bill, they want the water turned on in the end, you know, as far as.
Well, we set guidelines to that.
Good.
We said day, like water be turned off Monday and Wednesday.
If it was Friday, if it was Friday and Saturday, and they turn, and they wanted it turned on, uh.
Next business. And I didn't have to do that, I mean.
I didn't have to do that, that's what we do.
His elderly mother lives with him, and, you know, it already been all three weeks. He had cash money, which I really wanted because he was, it was a big bill, and I didn't want him to not pay. So, I mean, I did it on my own time, it wasn't, it wasn't that big a deal.
I understand, I understand, but if the situation is not happening, if he, if they, three weeks, and then obviously they got cash money, he would have that cash money in the morning, come down here when y'all open the door.
Pay toll.
Weeks, weeks, that guideline.
That's how the weekends go there.
I mean, if they, it might have been all three weeks, you know, but.
Now, what you just said right there, they.
We set guidelines, like, like I said, we can cut off water on Monday and Wednesday.
But, and that's why.
That gives them Thursday to come in here and pay their bill and get it turned on before the weekend. They know the office is closed Friday through Sunday.
And that's what I told Marcia, we're going to start doing, I said, I'm going to cut off the water on Mondays only.
Only on Mondays.
That gets you Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, to get your, your thing, you know, to, but to do that, because we're off on Friday, on Thursdays, we have to put out red tags. We have to put our red tags out on Thursday then.
Well, now, Marcia.
So Garrett can't come, Garrett's tied up, Marcia's husband can't come.
You don't want, Marcia, can I question, you don't want to put out red tags?
I do.
Or is that what you said?
If, in any event, there was a dog, that's the only.
Well, dogs, I've pressed, we've got to talk about him.
Yeah, well, you just told you what to do with dogs.
We're going to get you some spray.
Okay, I'll try to spray.
Order that.
But I don't see where it'd be no bad thing for you to put out a red tag.
And I've done it, me and my husband have done it multiple times.
Okay, you know better than I do, dear.
What is your husband's off days, the same day all the time?
He works at the hospital, so it changes every week.
Okay, so if we set a date and then his, his schedule changes.
He's supposed to be.
We can't, we can't change our, ours and the time to accommodate that.
He's supposed to be going to a set schedule? They keep saying next week, but it's supposed to be coming up soon, that he'll have a set schedule.
Then you could come back to us, with the set date.
Are you, are you recommending, or you're telling us that we want to go to Mondays for cutoffs?
Yes, that's what I'm trying, that's what I'm trying my best to do.
Okay, so, and cutoff, a cutoff will be as quick as possible after the bill's called up. I don't care if you do that Saturday.
Your work.
Your work.
Tuesday, Thursday.
Right.
Okay.
Not on Fridays.
Okay, so I'm pretty sure that. So, how, when will you know about a schedule for your husband?
I can ask him to start making, you said Mondays cutoff? I can see if he can start being off on Mondays as much as possible.
No, it's not, she needs to be at her Thursday, like.
Yeah.
We only just got.
That's normal, that's normal.
Yeah, it just depends how the month runs, and when the last day of the month is. Because the, we, we cut off to the last of the month.
Oh, you don't cut off every week?
No, no, unless you go, we have some that say, listen, I can't do it today by the 30, but I can come in Monday because that's when I get paid. And we try to be lax, but okay, well, you got, you know, the weekend. If they don't come in on Monday, I'm going to shut their water off. Or they're like, I get paid on the 31st, you know, come in, okay, we'll do that. If I, if I don't see you, I'm going to cut your water off.
Okay.
So.
But that, that only helps her even if we, if the husband gets a set date, that only helps her on that set date. If she has to turn off one day for the red tags another day, even if they don't meet there on that other day.
I mean, we've been lenient before and not did it on Mondays, but, you know, we, if we're super busy and.
I tell you what, the water situation is better than not changing in five years.
And we, we don't have a set schedule for that right now, and it's already doing well.
Yeah.
You know, so.
If we adopt, if we adopt this job description, and ask you and Lynn to work out a working situation combination, based on the, on the discussion we've had, the dog spray, schedule and all that, can, can we depend on that to happen?
When the situation comes up, can y'all two agree?
That, can the two of you agree, and she is the supervisor, so in the end, at the end of the day, she'll make the decision. Now, that decision can come here later and make it be turned over, overturned or something, but is that something we can do?
Yeah, if, if there's a little bit of flexibility on the day, that'd be wonderful.
We can do some flexibility on, and, and I have the opinion, and I don't know if Gordon shares this, but I have the opinion that, that as much of that meter work, water work, those kind of things that's outside and can't be done, that the maintenance person do it. But if, again, if he's, if we've got a broken line, like that six inch that run for two or three days or something like that, he's going to have to be there with the contractor, if we have to use a contractor, or he's going to have to be there down that hole.
The whole time.
And, and, and one of the other of these are going to have to do that, or. Are you, do you feel like you've been treated fairly?
Yes, I feel like.
And you feel like we've treated you fairly as the supervisor? Okay. Share with that type of motion that we accept this job description, it clarifies, it clarifies some of what we talked about, and I should just keep this from having to happen again, and that we will accept, most to accept this under the premise we talked about, that making sure that we do that. And if it don't, I want some, I want you to be back here next month, because we're going to talk about you. I want your big resume while we do it.
Good.
Okay.
I might go, won't you?
Thank you. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to the job, to the job description and to depend on this offer that was brought to, to make it happen. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Carter?
Yes.
You sure that she is, that she wants to have?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Carter? Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for telling. Now, can, are, are you going to leave Marcia?
Yes, sir.
Okay, because you said something in your presentation, I want your resume, a little bit labor, and you might want to be here. Or I can do it now if you need to do it.
No, I can.
The next thing is the upgrade for the Eldorado billing system, and this should be right behind the job description. This is something that Marcia has been working with Eldorado. Eldorado is our payment system. In that, we, she, when she needs a reader, she puts the meter reading, it should be right behind the job description. She puts the thing into the system, Eldorado is our payment system. This is an upgrade to that. The reason I brought it to the council is because they also, this also includes putting, processing our credit cards through Eldorado. And right now, when the customer pays online.
It's right, right from what's it said.
So right now, when the system that we have, when a customer pays their water bill, there's no charge if you're using a debit card or a credit card, there's no charge to the customer. Moving to this system, there's going to be a 3% charge on every card that we take. And so I didn't want to approve or do the upgrade without the council knowing that if we go to this system, we've had a lot of problems with Converge. We did call last week and talk to the man, he's put some extra security measures on there for us because we were hacked a week or so ago. And we consistently are getting hackers trying to get into the system, and so this Eldorado is a different system that will mirror our billing system now. The downside of it is it, it's going to be a, on a minimum bill, it'll be $2.06 fee to the customer. Where now they're paying and there's no fee. So I didn't want to make that decision without coming to the council. And then for Visa, Master Card Bank Express, it's going to be a minimum of $2.95. So.
Are we that fee now?
We are.
We're paying the fee?
We're, we're paying the fee and it's 1%. We're paying a 1% fee on, on all the customers. The upgrade itself is only, it's not that much money, less than $2,000. I didn't want to do it because I didn't know if the council would support the fee per transaction to the customer that they have not been paying. Before Marcia and I did that, I wanted to be able to say the council approved the change.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Is this going to allow a system that is going to exit from our system to access theirs, kind of like what Vernon's got? Or are you still going to end up with the issue that we've got now, which is that you're going to have these, the bots are going to have the ability to hack?
It should exit the website and log on to the credit, the new software that we're, that we're getting.
Because.
It's a login.
Because the request has been continually to, for us, and on behalf of your website, is to put a captcha type of a, of a device, and you can't do that unless it's a form or you're exiting from the website. You can't do it within the website, it just, it doesn't exist.
Apologize, that was me that asked twice.
Oh, no, that's okay, no, and, and nobody, nobody should know that if they don't mess with websites, but I just want to make sure that if this is going to take care of that problem.
It should, yes.
You're saying it will, I, I don't, I mean, that's what they're saying.
Let me ask you one more thing, are, is the customer, the person who wants to pay their water bill having to log into the, that, that system to be able to do so?
From the website, yeah, they'll.
That should take care of the problem.
Should, yes, sir.
The, the one we have, the one we have now, the Converge, they do offer a, a program that they said would almost eliminate it, but it's 20 cent per customer for us to do that, and that's where they'll actually make, kind of manually go in and look at each, I mean, they want to literally manually look at it, but it'll be much more detailed on what, what we do, but there is a 20 cent per customer fee for that, for us to implement those security figures, those security measures.
Is that a one-time 20 cent?
No, every transaction.
So they charge 20 cents per transaction?
Mm-hmm.
Is that not cheaper than going to a new piece of software?
Well, this, this, and basically what this is, is this is an upgrade to the system we already have, the Eldorado, and it's about five, six, less than $2,000. It's an upgrade to what we have, but including that upgrade is the fee per transaction, it's the 3% fee per transaction. And if we have under $5,000 a month in payment processing, we have a $30 fee.
And forgive me for asking. And forgive me for asking, I, it's just, obviously, we're on the recipient end of the calls for changing the code. We'll do it every day if necessary, but I would really, as much as you, I'm sure we would like to see you resolve that issue.
Yeah, the only caveat is the fee that most of our customers are used to not paying with a debit card. They're not used to any fee extra, um, from the card company. The, the big pluses, I think, with this new system is a lot of our customers have requested, uh, getting their bill by text message. It enables them to get a text message or an email with their bill for those that never get their postcard or don't know where it is. Um, so they really, really want that. Um, a lot of our, um, uh, younger generation has requested.
So why does that add to your workload?
Uh, it helps me and it helps, um, it helps. I mean, we're still gonna send out the postcards, but, um, you know, it just helps the customers because they, they really want an electronic version of that bill because their kid gets the postcard, they don't know where it is, and it's, it's just more convenient for them, and.
It adds, it adds to your workload if you have to text and.
Have the system.
Oh, it does it automatically.
Yeah, the system will do it.
Your system will do it.
Yes, yes. If I have their.
Do programs for which ones want to use email and do the.
Yes, yes. It will let me do that. And like, I already text a lot of people every month anyway, you know, to remind them about their past due bill, and that takes a big part of the day, sending out texts with my phone. And, um, but yeah, it would help out with that a lot. Um, they, they've, they've been asking for it, you know, an electronic version of their bill. It, and, um, I think it's gonna be a big plus in having the credit card system integrated with, um, our software for the water system is gonna, I feel like, help a lot with reconciling, um, our credit card statements at the end of the month with it, which is a huge hassle. Lynn can tell you. Reconciling the.
So there's a fee now, but we're, we're enjoying that.
One percent.
Mm-hmm.
One percent. This will charge the customer three percent.
A lot of, I feel like a lot of.
Do we give any of that?
No.
I think we're charging customers enough already. They will squawk if they hear that.
Which is my brother to the council, I did not want to make that decision.
Well, I don't either.
Yeah.
For that, people are gonna like it, because we just went up on the water bill.
Well, a lot of, um, a lot of people are used to that with small businesses now, a conven- and they just see it as a convenience fee. But then you will probably have people like me included. I will bring cash to not have to pay that fee, you know, uh, or a check. Um, you know, there's not a lot of places that accept checks.
You're just being reserved if that's what we need to be.
How, how much now are we committed by credit card payment, credit card or gift card payment?
A lot.
Yeah, so probably maybe fifty percent.
So we're, we're passing the five thousand dollars, or we're passing the five, the, exceeding the five thousand dollars?
We, we probably would.
Fifty, maybe sixty, maybe fifty.
It's not a lot. I would say more than fifty, but.
I'm surprised at that.
It's a lot.
We still get a lot of checks.
Everybody does now that starts working.
Well, and they like it because if you, if you work all day, you come home at night, you pay a water bill at night.
They'll get up here, point off the top.
Right, so people love paying with credit cards.
Well, that, that makes it better on y'all too. I mean, not the same.
Sure, that's about any big boss will have a job, but.
So how much the system that we have now, how much do we pay a month compared to what we'd be paying for this one? I've never checked it. I didn't realize we paid until I was talking to Converge to discuss what we have and what we need, and she told me that we had paid, that we paid a one percent fee. I don't know if that's billed into something that we paid. That was the first time I'd ever heard that, so I hadn't really investigated that that much.
Can we get the upgrade without fees? The fees come with the upgrade.
I'm thinking it does.
And we're not, we're not gonna let the fees, they're gonna go to the, to the vendor, they're gonna go to the, this company. I'm not too much in favor of the inflection, so for the hill.
Everybody's got a convenience fee nowadays.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't sure if it's gas, but it's three percent fee.
Yeah, and it's small businesses, which is what we are, you know, and, but if it's a small business, I always go by the ATM first because I know there's gonna be a two percent, three percent fee, and I'm, if I can avoid it, I do. But those that don't, it doesn't matter as much, they're happy to pay the two or three dollars, you know. It just depends on the person.
Mr. Rhyd, what's your thing?
Well, there's a pile of times, you're gonna have to pay fees. And we gotta use that system straight out.
Do we have to let one hundred dollars or six?
Yeah, we have it.
Sixteen hundred or something?
It's, um, it's twelve, and then it's five, right, five hundred to, to train.
What would Lynn or Marcy, what would y'all recommend to the council? Y'all, 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 for me, would that?
I'm all for it because I feel like it's, it's going to help those that are requesting the, um, electronic version of their bill is a big one. Because I keep saying, maybe next month we'll bring it up to the council and hopefully, you know, it'll go through. If it doesn't, it, you know, it'll be okay, but, you know.
I like that idea.
Some, sometimes I think and then I speak. And then sometimes I speak and then I think, and then I speak again. Let me speak a second now.
Go ahead. No, go ahead.
You're right. I, I review, maybe some people have two or three dollars.
Yes.
And in some, and in some household, that might make a difference, but this is a convenience fee. If they want to use a credit card bad enough rather than coming down here to pay the bill, they'll pay the convenience fee.
Right.
Mr. Rhyd? I'm sorry, I missed that. Oh, that, now I ask you, you, you spoke, you want to say that some of the, I asked Bill, but I didn't ask you.
Um. I wouldn't read pain customers, hopefully they'll be good.
Okay. Mr. Rhyd?
Well, I'd, I'd, I'd take Lynn or Marcy's recommendation. I mean.
That's what they're here for.
Yes, that they hit for, they, 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 I've asked me now, I'm just one person.
Right.
Would y'all note that? I mean, you know.
Ms. Rhyd?
I don't like that idea of the extra fee, but, I mean, like you said, if you want to pay it with a card bad enough, you'll pay it.
And cash and check is always an option, you know, and we have a drop box twenty-four hours, and people utilize it. They still do.
Two or three dollars don't mean much to a lot of people, you know, what it does to some people.
Yeah.
I understand that. We understand that. You, 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 you gotta, you, you, well, everything goes a little, but that's a, that's, that's, that's a fact of, you know, so. I'm fine with it. Y'all recommend that, but I don't know about Lynn.
Okay.
Or she recommended it or not. Lynn?
I don't have a, I don't have a thought either way.
Okay.
I was afraid the people would not be happy.
You want to mostly use this?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know about.
The main reason why I'm pushing for it is because of the people that want that electronic version of their bill. That's the main thing for me.
And we're still getting postcards.
Yes, you're still getting.
Okay, well, it's a pleasure to the council.
Now, I guess I don't, we have to start.
We need a. We need a motion.
I'll make a motion, or you'll head with it, and change that, right?
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll say it, you know, that's what y'all think's best.
We have a motion and a second. I don't know that there would be much of a discussion, but is there any discussion? Any other discussion? Ms. Rhyd?
No.
Rhyd?
Yes.
Rhyd?
No.
Sure that she is?
Yes.
Okay, the next thing, um, is Mr. Resher has, and, uh, we, there's no backup for this, but Mr. Resher has requested a hundred dollar increase on his salary for us to be able to use his distribution license, um, which he said is something that's required of the town to have someone, um, that has the license. And he feels like with the cost of everything going up, that he needs a hundred dollars extra a month, which will take him to eighteen hundred dollars.
Didn't he just get a raise? Last year, too.
Well, I'm gonna say no. That's my vote, I tell you.
I agree with y'all. I agree with y'all.
That don't take me long with, you know, what I know, we can do on that. I mean, uh, if, if y'all, the other council see difference, that's fine with me too. But no, he don't, he, I'd say no, and if he don't want to use this license, we, we can find some other license to use.
One of the things he mentioned to me was, um, in our recent DEP site visit, was that they asked him, uh, was he who we use or had our distribution services under or whatever? And basically, he told them he wasn't sure, but he says that he will have to call and report to DEP that we're not using him.
Well, I think, you know, I, I don't care. I mean, you know, I don't care if he called DEP. I mean, uh.
Before, before we take a vote, just getting.
Before we do that, we better make sure that, uh, we'll have to find somebody.
We've got somebody taking place.
What about the guy in Vernon?
Or offered, you know, we, this town have offered, if they hadn't increased, just paid eight hundred dollars a month to their water cons- console, a water man. And here we paying seventeen hundred dollars and he wants another hundred dollars. That's outrageous. That's bleeding the town a little slow. And, and that's a fact. I mean, that, you know, that's just a fact to me. But anyway, that's not a good subject for me to talk about anyway.
Can you shop around, Lynn, and see if we can find somebody else?
Yeah, I think.
We need to do that, don't, before we make a move.
I think it would be wise to do that. Um, I don't know what, I don't know what, that's a new term to me, the distribution license, that's a new term to me.
Yeah, I have never.
I don't know what we get from that, but, uh.
Oh, I did ask him that.
Finds the penalties that we could give to DEP for some of those things, which could be a loss of one hundred dollars, I'm sure.
I did ask him that. He said the water license that he has, that the water operator, um, pertains to the well and chlorinating the well. The distribution license is what we have to have, to have somebody on side if a water main shuts down. So the distribution license, because he's dual certified, allows him, us to be able to call him if we have a, a main water break.
So he's probably been doing that anyway because he comes out when we have breaks, doesn't he, huh?
But he charges, y'all, the town pays him more when he comes out. Isn't that correct, Lynn?
That's true.
Well, see, that, that's not, that's not.
Will you pay for doing both?
No, that should be covered under the money he's getting.
Oh.
And I tell him that, you know, he, maybe he should have been here in the meeting, and I can tell him, no, you know, I sure don't agree with that.
I, I, I think if we have to have something, we need to, we need to make sure we have it before we cut off the coast. I don't know, but any kind of penalty based, not started or anything like that, but, uh, the, the EDP benefits can, can get pretty, pretty still.
That's something you needed to say, is on it.
He wanted to start next month. I, and I could tell, I can tell that we would decide the table, that's what y'all want to do.
Is there a motion to the table? Yes.
Yes, I'll make a motion to table it.
Is there a second?
I'll take it.
In.
Don't let him come up and say, I want this money this month to an addict.
No, I've already got his check cut for this month.
Yeah.
Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Rhyd?
Uh, yes, I mean.
Ms. Rhyd?
Yes.
Ms. Rhyd?
Yeah.
Ms. Rhyd?
Yeah.
Sure that she is.
The next thing is a request from the Development Club, and I think Charles wants to speak to it, to, for a location change.
Uh, you may know that when the Possum Palace was originally put in place, um, there's been some configuration changes since then. The lean two has been added and, uh, that fence with the gates have been added. So the original, um, point of contact as you walked up to the Possum Palace was, there was a flagpole over on the right, and we built a, a nice monument to commemorate the, um, the opening of the Possum Palace. And so, and the Development Club, uh, did in the past kinda decorate the little flower bed around the monument that was placed there. And so what we're asking you is to allow us to, uh, move that monument out to a, a more reasonable location, and then to disassemble the current brick, um, flower bed and monument stand, uh, to allow that to, to, to look a little nicer up there as well. And our proposal was to, um, mount it using the appropriate mount, whatever the appropriate mounting devices were. Uh, and we've looked into some, but that on the wall, when you walk up to the Possum Palace, uh, in, in what I would call the main gate coming out of the, um, the ballpark. So, uh, uh, there's two possible locations we would recommend, either right there on the, um, east side of the building when you walk up, or around in the front, on the new facade that has Possum Palace above it. Maybe even when you walk up, there's a, there's a division where you can walk to the right or to the left, and there's a large center spot, possibly even there, with some nice standoffs so that it's secure, uh, and, and that's appropriate to, uh, you know, to mount to that type of ten on the wall. So Development Club wanted to ask you permission to pursue that so that we could get that, uh, moving and ready for fun day. Uh, and ask, go ahead and start now and ask any questions or answer any concerns you have about moving that, just the plaque. We're, we just want to put the plaque back up as it currently exists, back in a more, um, in a place where there's more traffic and people can notice it a little more.
What is the flagpole too?
Oh, oh, yeah, well, and secondary to that would be to move that flagpole out to that corner there, again, where that main gate is coming off the ball field, so that the flagpole is more, so that you can see that, like, from the vendors, you can see the flagpole more too, because really, the flagpole is now kind of out of sight, out of mind. It's not really a place that, uh, so, uh, willing to take that, two different recommendations, or as one recommendation, the Development Club would take that on.
Are they gonna do the expense, the cost?
Yes, yes, we would, we would take on the cost of that. What are your thoughts about that or concerns? Glad to answer. If you have any questions, glad to take it away and come back, uh, with.
I might say a lot of it, but I wanted to hear your presentation about three years ago, and I think everybody on the council then except, uh, except Ms. Rhyd, about three years ago, that was approved for our recreation department to move that.
That's correct.
They were going to either, uh, if you could have this conversation, I don't know that, that all of it took place in here, but the approval took place in here. He was wanting to see if he could get a, a piece of equipment, move the whole thing, rig everything and set it on the sidewalk where you go in the door, the little hall. Or mount it on the wall if they had to disassemble a brick, mount it on the wall like you said, where you do in the door, or either on any side. I, I don't, I think you're gonna put it on the wall, put it on one side of the other, or the hall, that's not good. It needs to face the park. Not, this might be, needs to face the parking lot when you walk in, you need to see it, that, that's where it goes. But we've approved the, in theory, at least, we have approved for that to be moved.
That's correct, but it wasn't the Development Club, so we wanted to come back to you and make sure that you understood. We didn't want to just go off.
We can build on that, again, to make sure that the building, uh, those, still are.
So your proposal though is that we do put it on that, that, I said wrong.
That's south facing wall. You want to face this to work playground.
Yes, south facing wall, yes, okay.
But now that's been three years ago, and, and, and I like that, so you need to hear from us again. Because somebody else is gonna do it, but.
Yeah, that's why we brought it back, because we know that they never had that time, and then now that we don't have that recreation staff, uh, it probably was not going to get done.
I think it's a good idea.
I do, too.
Put it out where you can see it more.
Yeah, it's a good idea to put it on a wall, like, that, put anything on it, always, you know, a bunch of hoes in that wall.
Sure.
Watch your skin.
Absolutely.
And that's where that water's getting, and that's not that. And that's what we've talked about.
Absolutely, and we.
I agree with that.
And I'll, I'm glad to bring it back, but we've looked into, uh, we, we'll be buying, you know, waterproofing, um, attachment devices that, so when you screw in, it takes in with the rubber, uh, you know, a rubber seal that you're going in, and of course, we'll put caulk, and we, we feel the same way, that you don't want to, um, weaken. caulk, and we, we feel the same way, that you don't want to, um, weaken or damage your, your waterproof there.
And, you know, somebody being a chair dog.
That's right, yeah.
But, uh, I, I think we're, I think we are all approved of the concept of putting it right out front and visible, that's, uh, that's basically the issue of the building.
Yes. Uh, I, I bring it back up because Dalton has, every time we see it, Dalton says, we need to get that thing out there. Uh, it's kind of one of his loves and, um, and just, and again, I think everyone agrees it.
The first, the first project, above the first project, that I worked on when I started working, January nineteen seventy-seven, Diane Carter and I closed out that grant. We had never had a grant before. The Possum Palace, that was one of the first projects that we worked on, was closing out that plant. And, and I think that's, uh, I'm sure who names it's on that now is.
Bob Sykes is one of them.
Yeah, for sure.
For sure.
Yeah, I was looking at it, I think, oh, the council, might have been Beatrice Wood might have been on there. She made it. Yeah.
You, you want us to vote on that?
If you would, just to make sure they are okay with that move.
Somebody have a motion? We'll, we'll have them proceed if you bring us back anything that we need to do.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make that.
Got a motion of second?
Second.
Got a motion of second in discussion?
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
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 Thank you for your opportunity to present that to you and, okay, talk about it.
Okay, uh, the next thing is approval of the driveway plan. Uh, I got a, the letter, a letter yesterday from the develop, the company that's doing the development that we're assuming is the Dollar General on Jefferson Street. They need a letter from the mayor approving the driveway as the picture I gave you. It's, I've got it highlighted in yellow, and it basically, people turn off of Seventy-Seven onto Buster Rogers and then turn back left into the store. So, I want to bring that to the council so that the mayor can sign the letter, say that the town agrees with it.
As best I recall, that looks like the, that I viewed, so, uh, one burger, maybe, any of these. Big what's the pleasure of the council? That's the, that's the, this is going from the right end and, and, uh, that's Buster Rogers. Some of you may just for a conversation, I do, uh, just go, I see if we can get that development to extend out on that to Jefferson Street. We're fixing to surface that, that gives a good street, I want to do Buster Rogers and Jefferson, with paving. Do we approve this plan?
I'll make a motion. Do we need a motion?
Please.
I, I'll make a motion to approve it, if you have a plan. Lynn, trying to get the page, or the partial page.
Okay, we have a motion in a second?
I'll say it.
We got a motion in a second? Mr. Wolfson?
Yes.
Mr. Rattner?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Sheriff, it is.
And finally, we need a date and time for awarding of the RSP one thirty-eight Grant Administration.
Probably RSP.
That's, that's.
Going to go rank, my back.
Need a date and a time.
Is our next meeting too soon, too late?
I'd rather go ahead and get it done so we can get it back. These grants are so.
We're going to recess till Tuesday, four o'clock. If they come back, if we come back and have a rank, can we do it at the same time?
Yeah, that's what we're talking about. It's just, can we do it on Monday, though? Did you say?
Didn't you say month?
Yeah, you said it. Okay, okay.
Monday, four o'clock.
We could come in with a rating.
And in the same meeting, whoever was high, high scored or would have been.
Right.
We're just gonna recess this, Jeff, so we don't need a mo, do we need a motion on this? Make it Monday? Okay, okay.
You could vote to table it, if you don't think you have to.
Sir?
You could vote to table it, if you don't think you have to. Special meeting.
Mr. Porter, do you have anything?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Sweetland, lower corner of the lane. What kind of challenge will we ever get through to get, uh, that? There, I'm going to ask Jeff that question. Is, is it a county road, state, not state road?
County. Is penny maintained inside the neighborhood?
I don't know the answer to that question. I'm talking about, I'll have to ask the county to talk about it, but I think the county has to. I, I think so. Okay, uh, so I need to talk to the county commissioner. Uh, the sheriff?
That, that would be the. That would be, that would be very helpful. He can make a better posting. If, if it is a posting, I think it's thirty-five.
Oh, you don't have no signs up?
Yes, thirty-five. That's way too fast.
Well, you didn't call tech and get it reviewed.
You were speaking at the lower.
Yeah, at least twenty.
And new signs would be as much good as old signs.
Yeah, they said if they get it paved, they're really going to fly.
They'll not pass it when it's paved.
But, I, I talked to either, or both, Mr. Cruz and, uh, Mr. Mason.
Uh, my neighbor com, complained to me about them driving too fast up there, you know, with kids out, you know? They keep them in a fenced place there, but, uh, it's possible they could actually get on the roads, you know?
With the roads you're on, that might happen, with the roads she's on, you can't go too fast, and you can't. Okay, anything else? Mr. Porter, anything else for me? Mr. Porter, I don't know.
I'm good.
Wolfson?
Good.
Um, I had two things. One, the, um, the program that you pay your water bill through, is the new one or whatever we decide for, is it gonna have, like, when you can put in your name and it pulls up your account number and tells you what you owe?
You should be able to, when you get on our, our website, you'll, uh, you'll click Pay Here or Pay Water Bill Now, and then it'll take you to the new system, the new software that we're wanting to upgrade to, and then you'll put in, like, your, whatever login information that they need, whether it be your account, your account number or your name or whatever they use for that. I can find out if that, if you need that specific.
Well, I just had somebody asking me about it because I guess the system that we're using now don't have that. You have to know how much you owe in order to pay it.
Right. You will know how much you owe.
And, um, another thing is the pothole that's out there on the little side road next to the Tom Thumb, have y'all noticed that?
Yes.
Yes, I talked to Eric about it today, yes.
That's all.
Got a couple of things, and one of them could just relax the jaw, uh, or if you would, down there across the house, especially in the, I see fences and all up and down there, it's deep, it needs to move. And I don't know what it was, gears doing, it said, oh, they were about these things, you got to fix it.
You checked it today?
Huh?
You checked it today?
On the way to the meeting.
Oh, where was that, on the north?
On the north, yeah. And between the fence and the, and the, and the building and around on the, the side.
Okay.
And then the guy, the community service, Phil and Tom, didn't see many of them. Okay. I asked over the weekend about community service work, and I told him, see, uh, the town hall, and he was, when we hit Lady Warren, I just thought I'm looking at that, you know, not having someone who can go pay doing that.
Yeah, I did have one thing, one thing, Lynn can tell me, or Marcia, who, who, whose, uh, responsibility it is to mow the side of road, like, going out on, what's this road right over here?
Pioneer.
Pioneer Road, you know, as you leave, kind of way of going out, whose, whose responsibility is to mow that side, the little side right there? They start and they mow all the way to Rogers down there, but they leave, always leave that section right there. And I've been told in the past that it's a county road and it, it ain't, don't come under the city of Wasslaw. Is that correct? I need to find out, I mean.
You talk about the road down here and, and go at Rogers Park?
Yeah.
That's county road.
So, the county would be?
It's in the city of Land.
The fair labor, not fair labor standards, the, um, whatever that, that is law is, says that if a road begins outside of and runs into or through the jurisdiction, it remains the, it remains.
Well, I've been told it's a county road, so, I mean, but I know it never gets mowed. I mean, I'm just saying that.
And we may, we may need to request that, and we do, they don't care if we do mow it inside, but a few years ago, uh, some of you were here then, we had to, it may have been before back in June, but I think it was Dave, quit doing that because we was tearing up our right, what was, our bush off would be moved, uh, county and state moved, ought to be moved by the county and state, because out over there.
Yeah, but this is no problem for us, I guess, it's just.
I think we could do it, there, there'd be more as we got, I think we could do it at least a pass.
It don't take, you know, a pass or two to get that.
Go back in and.
But, yeah, it's, it's a hazard for, you know, for me to do it or Shirley to do it, because they come around that corner real fast, and if you just accidentally go out on the road, you, you in danger.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that's been, and at times they mow it and then at times they, they don't, you know? Twice here, I think it was mowed two times, so, so.
That's another one of those, uh, that's another one of those roads, it's, yeah, it was, got some mischievous stuff, the county commissioners designated, the Daniel Eight. And now, one called Pioneer Road.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You're right, yeah.
Anything else?
No.
Let me, let me mention my last thing, uh, and, and it's related to what Marcia said a while ago, and it may be altogether different, uh, about Tennessee Hall. Uh, we were here this Saturday and, and it was not, uh, uh, well, I can't say that the vehicle wasn't in, in good shape. We probably do need to, it's probably about time for that six months cleaning that we do on our floors, we've got several spots, all of them, they've been to that. But, uh, there's broken shelf in here and we got, they wouldn't place that big on that countertop, it would have covered up with something. I know we have the Equipment Club and the Flower Club, and we may have something that's the ladies will start the counseling and things like that. I'm not sure who all brings food and, and things like that, but, uh, we probably need to, we probably need to, that, it probably needs to be done something better. That fridge ready needs to be cleaned out, ketchup, stuff in there, I don't know how it is and stuff like that. And we, if you bring food and don't eat it, take it, take it back with you. We might need some law, some kind of, uh, uh, I don't know what you call it, some kind of guidelines for the used stuff or something like that. But, uh, we got, I, I was sitting back here thinking, I see cups, see coffee cans, see all kinds of stuff, just looking through the window there. And we got the cabinets in there to the ceiling, to the floor, and cabinets needs to be organized and things needs to be put up where they belong and stuff like that. What's that old plan that you buy, Harry Carter says, if you take it out, put it back, mess it up, clean it up, things like that, so, uh, I'd like to see maybe some, some, if you got ladies that's coming, you got ladies that's coming from Secret Service, I mean Community Service. If you got somebody coming, then I'd say, hey, y'all, don't take all these, uh, you got piles and piles of cups and plates and, and paper and wax paper, things like that, organize this, put it, and then just tell these for our users that we're trying to, we're trying to screw something a little bit, and, and I'm sure that they will all, uh, try to, try to do that. Is that something you can do?
Mm-hmm.
Anything else? I'm sorry. Happy New Year. Our attorney is with us tonight, Mr. Mitch Porter, Douglas Woods is with us.
I haven't seen you since February.
Yeah.
Uh, I did just have a text exchange with county attorney, and he said he also does not know the answer to that speed limit question, so he's getting hooked to, just thought I would have that. Do you have any questions for me about anything? I don't have anything to add, if you have any questions for me.